...voted for our own reasons. That was just that state, that's where we ended up. There was nothing that any of us up here could have done at that point, once it ran that way. I'm a proud US Army veteran. When I raised my hand, when I raised, when I raised my hand and took an oath to protect and to... When I, when I raised my hand and took an oath many years ago, it was to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. Nowhere in that document does it say that we need to pledge allegiance, not one place. Now, now, now all seven of us up here are human beings with our own flaws. Over the past three weeks, I have received several hundred emails and phone calls, as I'm sure my colleagues have, from far and wide about the Pledge of Allegiance. Many of them were not in such kind language. One of them even calling for me to be hung. After reading and listening to all of them and doing much soul-searching, I've concluded that I made a mistake, and I am sorry, and I'm asking for forgiveness. I'm asking for forgiveness from a long list of people who have all been affected by this As I seek this forgiveness, as I seek this forgiveness, I have a challenge for all elected officials throughout the entire country. As this has become a national issue, I am here admitting this mistake on camera in an open meeting. I challenge you, regardless of the level of office of government, to go on camera as I am and admit the mistakes that you have made while you've been elected in office, and ask forgiveness, such as I am, so the healing can begin. Aside from, aside from the separation of my wife, the loss of my father, mother, and father-in-law, these past three weeks have been the most difficult time in my life. And I, and I'm hopeful however, that we can correct this mistake and get on to running the business of our city. As our longtime former mayor Jeff Jacobs always said, "It's not rocket science, people. Drink, drive, and flush." Thank you.
Alright, folks, please, councilmember Harris.
Good evening, residents at home and in the audience here. My words are for you as members of our community. As I stated last week during our study session, I am in favor of returning to speaking the Pledge of Allegiance at the start of our meetings. This... Yep. So coming to this conclusion has taken several hours of reading people's emails, both thoughtful and extreme in their deliberation, as well as listening to voicemails. One Saturday morning, I received a call before six in the morning from someone in Texas about this topic. Our community has pride in what we do. We have strength in coming together and talking in conversation. Our residents have expressed their dissatisfaction in this council vote and also their alliance with the council's choice. It's through this reading of both points of view, as well as hearing, that I've come to the conclusion, after talking, hearing, reading, from a couple hundred folks within the Ward III area and beyond, that for the sake of our community and our staff, we have much business to tend to beyond this, conversing with your ideas about strengthening our neighborhood shopping districts in the coming weeks and months, and I'll be bringing some legislation forward on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Spino. Welcome to all the people that are here in the room and evidently watching across the state and country. Thank you to our staff here at City Hall. As I said last week, they do the hard work here providing good quality municipal services. It's a shame that they've had to bear the brunt of the anger that many people have directed towards this city and its people. The staff didn't ask for this controversy and shouldn't be made to pay for it. My apologies. I sincerely want to thank the citizens of St. Louis Park and particularly the voters of Ward Four, who give me the opportunity to represent them on this council. I appreciate that even though I may have acted in a tone deaf manner initially on this issue, they have not, sharing their divergent opinions with me in respectful and reasoned manners. Well, there were a few, you did one, but generally, they've been very respectful and thoughtful. I've had the opportunity to have deep and meaningful conversations with so many about patriotism, service, and community. I've learned a lot and again been impressed with the depth of love for our city, country, and community that St. Louis Park citizens have. You're the best. I also want to apologize to immigrant citizens throughout the city, state, and US. You didn't ask me to vote to change our standing agenda, discontinuing to routinely say the pledge, and why people blame you for this is beyond me. Though I talked for others, I was the one moving to take the pledge off the standing agenda, as I wanted to change the opening of our meetings. We never even got to talk about my proposal to say "My country tis of thee," as the outcry from certain segments to no longer saying the pledge was so loud. I want to talk to our national media, specifically the fake, excuse me, Fox News. A couple of, a couple of questions for them. Number one, number one, why don't each of your...
Folks, folks.
Number one, why don't each of your shows start with the pledge? It only takes 15 seconds.
Because it's not patriotic.
Number two, why do you seize upon issues like this, seeking to divide us all? We aren't looking, we weren't looking, we weren't looking to do this, to have a patriotism debate, only to change the opening door of meetings.
Well, you did.
St. Louis Park doesn't have the liberty to have its own council agenda? Where's the justice in that? This council comes down here every week and works on our city and America's problems. You want people to hate us because we start our meetings in a manner you deem politically incorrect? Wasn't this the issue during the McCarthy era? Certain bullies trying to dictate acceptable behavior? This is America, I pledge allegiance to it. As we strive to have liberty and justice for all, please let us have our liberty here and respect our local control. As to the motion before us, I've heard from over a hundred residents, equally divided, half saying they want us to discontinue routinely saying the pledge, the others asking to support adding it back into the agenda. Like those of us on the council, they are divided. And like us on the council, the vast majority of the citizens have shared their opinions respectfully, asked us to stop fighting over the issue and get back to working on the issues that challenge all of us. Climate change response, transportation and transit, creating a quality healthcare system that's affordable for everyone.
No, it's not, I don't have insurance.
Tearing down barriers to success for all of us. That, and providing high quality municipal services to a great community. To the voters and citizens of St. Louis Park, I want to assure you, we will. So, in the sincere desire to move this matter off our current agenda, I'll vote to put the pledge back on the regular agenda and support the mayor in calling for all of us to join, if you choose to do so. I'll also invite all of those that have an opinion on this issue, pro or con, to please join us here or in your own city, in moving to address bigger and more challenging matters ahead of us. Matters that can't be solved with a 15-second pledge. The challenges are many and require us all to work on them. We do need to become one nation, indivisible. So please join us in working on it, not just complaining about others and how they open their meetings. The work of democracy calls all of us to participate. Please join us.
Thank you. Councilmember Harris.
You know, as I look around this room today, I see a bunch of people who love their country. And for my St. Louis Park neighbors, thank you so much for being here. And for all of you who are visiting our humble city, and anyone out there who's just tuned into this issue, I am confident that every single one of us loves our country and our... And our being here and engaged in this conversation is an expression of our love of country and upholding these values. And I know that that's true for you, for the folks tuned in, for the folks on this dais. I've been here for 10 years.
Too long!
Committed to protecting this equality and justice for all. Liberty and justice for all. So I don't need anyone to pledge allegiance to the flag for me to understand that they respect the values that are enshrined in the Constitution. The very fact that someone comes to our meetings and chooses to engage in our community demonstrates clearly to me that they care about our committee, our community, and that they are committed to the values in our Constitution. And the richness and the complexity and the diversity of our great country means that we have this in common, right? That we love our country and that we share this respect, but we express it in different ways. So I've taken an oath of office three times now, and that oath asks me to swear to uphold the US Constitution, to uphold the Constitution of the state of Minnesota, and to uphold the St. Louis Park City Charter. And I take that oath seriously and that pledge seriously. Many of you may not agree with the many ways in which I express my patriotism and my love of country, and I'm guessing that I'm not going to see eye to eye with some of you on how you express yours. And again, that is the richness of our community. For example, the US Flag Code is pretty clear in Section 8, Article D, that wearing images of the flag on your clothing is a disrespect to the flag. But I know, but, but I know that those people here who are wearing the flag love their country. I know they love their country just like I do. So St. Louis Park residents...
Folks, folks, please.
The St. Louis Park residents with whom I've spoken and emailed have nearly all been respectful and thoughtful and reflective, and I would expect nothing less of my wonderful neighbors. And some agree with us and some disagree, and that's okay. My St. Louis Park constituents understand that no matter what your faith is or your lack of faith, what, what your background is or your politics, if you're concerned about wanting to say the pledge as a sacred thing more, or if you're concerned about separation of church and state, don't, that we respect and engage in conversation in our community together to make it a better place. And we will continue to do that regardless of what happens at this vote tonight. We'll continue to do that without any requirement or mandates to prove allegiance or loyalty. Show up, that's all you need to do in St. Louis Park. So, I don't know what the right number of times is to say the Pledge of Allegiance. Is it once a day? Is it once a week? Is it, is it once a month? Is it every single meeting of the city staff? What we've done since I've been on the council for the last 10 years is we've done it the first and third Mondays of the month. Okay, the motion is to reinstate that, and I'm going to be supporting that tonight. But I'm not sure that if you say the pledge three times a month instead of this two, that you're more patriotic, or if you say it one times a month, you're less patriotic. That's ridiculous. So you know what? Everyone is free to say it as often as you want, and if it's too much for you when you come in this favor, you don't need to say it at all. Just come and engage in our community. So this is where we're at, okay? This is where we're at. City staff, as my colleagues have pointed out, they've been inundated with emails and calls, many of which are vile, vulgar, and threatening, as I have received. I would, I would challenge some of the news stations that have riled up this response to actually play those messages on TV without bleeping them out. It is not patriotic to have that vile, vulgar, threatening emails. And the problem is, is that it's, it's made it a challenge, as my colleagues have pointed out, for our city to conduct business in the way and at the quality that our residents expect and deserve. So with my... Their parody email that he said there's some branch that turned the stop sign that's grown over it and it's causing some public safety concerns. On a regular day, we'd be out there within four hours trimming that branch and making sure that our public safety and public services are working. But right now, those kinds of things are getting lost in the vile, vulgar, and threatening emails that we are receiving, not from our residents, but from folks far away from St. Louis Park. So today, I choose a path of crap to carry. We need to end this focus on the pledge and get back to the hard work and the good work that this community is doing to secure affordable housing for all of our residents, to continue to work on our local climate action plan because the federal government has shirked their responsibility on that. And it's proving our community a great place to live and learn and work and play. So our community, every single day, demonstrates our country's values in working towards liberty and justice for all, and I stand by actions over words any day.
There's a proverb that goes something like, "May you live in interesting times." We live in an interesting time. We all have our reasons. I'm not going to rehash mine. Many of you were here writing. But our work, I agree with my colleagues, that our work needs to continue, and right now, that's not possible for the last month. This is largely all that we've dealt with. And I also just want to sort of highlight, well, I'm just, I'm going to deviate from what I was going to say tonight, because I think tonight's meeting dictates it. I want to turn my attention to my colleague Steve Hall. Humility is one of the most important leadership traits that any single person can ever have in their lives. And for those of you who are in this room or under the age of 18, just starting your lives, that's a lesson you need to learn. That's a lesson you need to learn. I don't particularly care why, I don't particularly care why, is the fact that he is asking for forgiveness and displaying humility. It is the most important characteristic that any, in my opinion, that any good leader can have. So I thank you for that, Steve. I'm also, I'm going to close on this, because I, I don't need to go on for a long, long time. I have told people before many, many times that my wife and I picked St. Louis Park, we're not from here. I grew up in Kansas and she grew up in Duluth. We chose to live in St. Louis Park because it was the sort of community that we wanted to raise our children in. It's the sort of place that my public school teaching wife wanted to teach kids in. This last month has been, without a doubt, and in talking to prior mayors and councilmembers, I think they would agree, probably the most challenging period that we faced in years and years and years, maybe going back 40 years. But I have never been happier and more proud of my community than I have been in the last four weeks. People on all sides of this argument strongly oppose the decision the council made, strongly supportive of the decision the council made, but all of them treating us with respect and acknowledging that this was not an easy time to be one of us. Now, understanding, we all signed up for this. I get that. I get that. Totally get that. We put our names on a ballot and agreed to come up here. But the reality is that this is uncharted territory for just about any city in the country, especially for folks that are part-time councilmembers. So I just want to say to all of the residents who are here, and I'm not, I'm not pitting residents and non-residents, I had a lot of, I had a lot of people who contacted me who worked from St. Louis Park who were also respectful. Clear, strong, strong opinions, but respectful. But for the people who live in my community, I just want you to know that I've never been prouder to be your mayor than I am tonight. With that, I am going to just ask for a vote on the motion. To clarify, the motion is to return to our practice of saying the Pledge of Allegiance as we have before our regular voting business meetings. Is that correct? Correct, okay. So all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? All right, that passes unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to take a 10-minute break as we did last week because we have business that we need to conduct. So for those of you who are here for this item, you can certainly head on.
Totally good, guys. Don't leave.
I've been supporting our city, I've been staying the whole time.
Oh, guys, hold on. We're going upstairs.
Thanks, me too.
Pardon me, fellas. Stay on, everybody.
We're going to go up to...
Ooh, there's some excitement upstairs. Hold on. For those of you who don't know what's going on, I'm Ben Dor with Minnesota Gun Rights. This is not necessarily a gun rights-related issue, but... How you doing, guys?
Good.
Oh, let's see, one more floor.
Right shape, man.
Hey, you too, take care. Stay on, folks.
Check out the eagle outside, Ben.
Oh, I'll do that. Check this out.
........................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................ All right, guys, hold on, here we go. Maybe you can hear me now. All right, for those of you just who don't know what's going on here, we're at St. Louis Park, Minnesota, where hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of law-abiding, peaceful, America-loving patriots showed up because of St. Louis City Park, in order to pander to certain individuals, decided that the Pledge of Allegiance was offensive, and that they were going to be doing away with the Pledge of Allegiance so as not to offend certain individuals who are now members of their community who might not like it very much. Now, you can either say the Pledge of Allegiance, or you cannot say the Pledge of Allegiance as far as we're concerned at Minnesota Gun Rights. That's called freedom. But what we don't like is watching our state and these liberal cities flushing our way of life down the drain, flushing our flag down the drain, our Pledge of Allegiance down the drain, all in order to pander to people who don't like America. They don't love America. These people love America. Look at them. Beautiful people. Hundreds of them, hundreds and hundreds. Big shout-out to Marnie Hockenberg and Michelle for turning out all these people. How you doing, guys?
Woo! 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 Got it done, guys. Got it done. Very nice. Very nice. So only a few minutes ago, the city... How you doing, Greg? Hold on, I gotta turn this camera around.
So I'm gonna have to go get wet.
Oh, hold on.
I'm gonna get like the one that's...
Hold on, I gotta turn it around. There we go. Now we're going that way. Here you go. How you doing, guys? Well done, everybody.
............ They voted to restore the Pledge of Allegiance. What have you got there? Very nice. Here.
All right. Here we go. We got our pledge back. We got our pledge back.
That's right. That's right. Got the pledge back. For those of you who don't know, this is St. Louis City, St. Louis Park, Minnesota.
For those of you who don't know, this is St. Louis City, St. Louis Park, Minnesota. This is great. This is great.
Maybe we'll see you again.
Yes, you will. You too. Take care. Great people turning out here, guys. We'll turn this camera back around a minute. So this city council in particular, this is the Senate District of Ron Lattz. Ron Lattz represents this district, so you know how liberal and left it is. But just now, well, they got muscled into restoring the pledge of allegiance thanks to hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of folks, patriots, beautiful people who turned out and got this done. Turn it around, guys. How you doing, man?
How about you?
Awesome.
Been a while.
No.
They came out Facebook. They came out half...
What the heck? Here they come, more and more. Love it. Beautiful.
We did it.
That's right.
USA, one nation, one God.
Patriots, guys. Can't get enough of them. And there's a great big friggin' muscle patriot right there. How you doing? Great.
Wouldn't miss it.
Oh, heck no. I only missed the last one because I was in Richmond beating up Governor Ralph Northam, so...
I seen that. That was good.
Yeah, I had to pick and choose a little bit.
Good job.
Appreciate it. Some great people right there. So guys, just so you know, so the city council members, they're all crying in their big, great big, great big crocodile tears. They're in there going, "Oh, you've been so mean to us." One of these guys owns a daycare, which, you know, C cap fraud, anybody? I don't know. Could be. Who knows? One of the city council members is on Amy Klobuchar's campaign. She's helping Amy Klobuchar run for president, okay? These are radical leftist city council members, not like normal folks. This is St. Louis Park, guys. We're spinning this back around. You'll notice, no elected officials here, nobody turned up. I don't even think Jennifer Carnahan decided to stroll on out for it this time. Well done, Marnie.
Victory. We fought city halls and we won.
That's right. That's right.
Power to the people. Power to the people, baby. Save the pledge.
Yeah.
Nice work, Marnie. Yeah, victory.
I'm sure. I'm sure Jennifer Carnahan will be claiming victory tomorrow, I'm sure.
Should be fundraising.
Yeah.
We saved the pledge.
Oh, yeah, we saved them.
GOP saved the pledge. Give us money.
Yeah.
I don't see any GOP here.
No. No elected officials. Do you see any elected representatives in there?
No elected officials were there because this is right with Trump left.
Well, not an elected official, but elected state official. GOP was here.
Who was here?
Forest. Rain right now.
Yeah, that's not what we're going for.
I know. I know. But you can't say none.
She's, she's not an elected state official. She wasn't elected by the people.
Well, she's elected by her party.
We're not. We're not. This guy's forest and he's a GOP flappy, so...
Uh, yeah.
Uh, you're not a nice guy. Look at, hey, guys, I want to, look at that. Look at that stinking eagle over there. Look at the size of that thing. Hold on, if I can manage to phone in the umbrella at the same time, it is pouring rain over here.
Are you worried about that wolf? I love it, the PVC.
Well done, everybody. Beautiful. Hey, guys, share this video around if you haven't already. We're swinging back over here, see what's going on inside, guys. So here we are, St. Louis Park, Minnesota. Big victory tonight, you know? Like I say, you can say the pledge or you cannot say the pledge of allegiance. It's your choice. But when this city council, full of radical leftist liberals of the highest order, I mean, just terrible people, these are, these are, these are Senator Ron Lattz-style leftist Marxists who run this place, this is St. Louis Park, for heaven's sake. There's some good people here, but they're not on the city council. So when the city council decides that we're going to pander to some people who hate America and get rid of the pledge of allegiance altogether, well, that just doesn't sit well with patriots. And that's why about twenty minutes ago, the St... Hey, look at that. The St. Louis Park City Council voted to restore the pledge of allegiance for the citizens of St. Louis Park. And it's raining so hard, it's coming right through the umbrella. This is bizarre. Hold on.
Hey, Marnie, what do you want me to do with you?
Well, we're going to squeeze past this fella here in a minute. He's, uh, he's got the doorway a little blocked off right here. Let's see if we can squeeze in. We got to talk to Michelle, guys. Don't leave before we put the mastermind of this whole thing on here.
In the bottom floor, this is the parking lot. Yeah. That would be the local first floor.
Hey, can I squeeze past you there, fella?
You want what?
Can I squeeze past you there? Can I squeeze past you?
Oh, I'm sorry.
You know what? I'll just talk to her right here. Michelle.
What's up?
How you doing? Hey, we got a, oh, hold on. If you press that little turnaround button right there, eh, I can't reach yet. There we go. Guys, here's, yeah, I'll crouch down a little bit. Here's one of the masterminds, Michelle Even. No, it wasn't the GOP, it wasn't Jennifer Carnahan, it wasn't these people, it was people like Michelle Even right here, Marnie Hockenberg. That's right. Brought out hundreds and hundreds of people to St. Louis Park and...
Beautiful.
Beat them, beat them. They all sat there, they all sat there and cried.
Hundreds of people. Hundreds of people showed up. It was amazing. People, get yourselves organized, get yourselves motivated, go do something and save this country.
Amen to that. Well, that's what happens. When we get together, we win. Even in leftist crab shoots like St. Louis Park, we win, even when radical liberals. How you doing? Hey, appreciate your prayer. Appreciate that.
Hey, thank you.
Appreciate your prayers at the beginning.
Well, I'll tell you, that was really, really an honor, but I just want to thank you for the work that you do because I watch it on Facebook a lot.
Absolutely. My pleasure.
Keep fighting the good fight. Thank you for what you do.
Absolute, my, my absolute pleasure. Thank you, sir.
God bless you.
If I had a hand, I'd shake, if I had a hand for you, I'd shake your hand.
All right, well, we'll just give it one of these.
Sounds good. Hey, you drive safe. Take care now.
No, not yet. Okay, I'll check. I know how to search.
Well, that's me, and I've been doing it for ten years.
Hold on, guys, we're going to squeeze in here quick.
Well, back in the day.
So I'm still there.
Pardon me there.
And the press, the press just couldn't handle it, but then they do it now.
Oh, let's see. Anything going on in here?
All right, yep, yep.
Hold on, guys. There's two great people. Teresa, don't run away.
Downstairs. Okay, well, meeting is funny. If anybody wants to go celebrate.
I don't know. You're all clapping with the... Teresa, what? How you doing? Guys, go to Mill City Citizen Media, follow Teresa. Follow Teresa, she's blessed. Teresa, Marnie, Michelle, they're the ones who got this done. Look at, three great people. One, two, three. Great people, guys.
I know I'm out of order, but I love you all, so...
Well, not much else to talk about here. The pledge has been restored. Guys, I'm Ben Dorf, Minnesota Gun Rights. I'm going to sign off for now. I'll be back later with more updates. I'll be back tomorrow. Take care. Stay safe. Carry on. Thank you for all your work. God bless America. Carry on, guys. We'll talk later.